I would like to welcome you to the Russell County Board of Supervisors, July the 6th, 2020, at 5:00 PM in the Russell County Conference Room. I would like to first start off with the call of order and roll call. Tim Lovelace here. Gwen Wallace.
Here.
Carl Ray.
Here.
David E.
Here.
Steve Brady.
Here.
Horace Christian.
Present.
Rebecca Dye.
Here.
Ma'am, you have a court.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, I would like to make a motion for us to go into the executive session. Please, here, Rebecca.
Ma'am Chair, I make a motion to go into the executive session to, with the purpose of discussing legal matters pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A, items 1, 7, and 8.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Who's got it?
Tim.
Tim, okay. All right, roll call, Tim?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Horace?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
We go into executive session.
July the 6th, 2020, in Russell County Conference Room. And we need a motion to come out of the executive session.
Do we have a motion to come out of the executive session?
So may.
Steve, thank you, we have a second?
Second.
David, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.
Certification closed session pursuant to subsection 2.2-3712, D.C., Code Virginia, 1950. As amended, each member of the Board of Supervisors up on roll call certifies that, to best of their knowledge, only public matters were rightfully exempted from the open meeting requirement under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened or heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board of Supervisors. Any member of the Board of Supervisors who believes that there was a departure from the requirements shall say so prior to the vote indicating substance of the departure that any his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe a departure has taken place? Seeing that, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Gwen Wallace?
Yes.
Carl Ray?
Yes.
David E.
Yes.
Steve Brady?
Yes.
Horace Christian?
Yes.
Rebecca Dye?
Yes.
Ma'am, you have a court order to return to regular session.
Okay. All right, at this time, we'll stand for the invitation and remain standing for the pledge, please. Thank you, Your Lord, for giving us another day. Thank you, Lord, for the blessings that You bestowed on us. Reach out Your hand and touch us as a community, a state, a nation, and the world in these troubled times. Lead, guide, and encourage us to do Thy will, not our will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
The allegiance, the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business we have lived in, just as for all.
All right, at this time, we need a motion to approve the agenda, but I believe we need to add, we need to amend it, to add a fourth comment under the county attorney's reports. All right, so do we have a motion to amend the agenda, to add the fourth thing to the county attorney?
So Lou, ma'am chair.
Lou, do we have a second?
Second. What is that, fourth?
You need to, we need to do that.
Okay, it was to the agreement for the county attorney, a moral obligation, and it would be the fourth statement under the county attorney. Okay, and Carl, did you second it?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The first thing we have is our new business, which is the approval of the minutes for our June 1st meeting. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes as planned for the June 1st meeting?
So move.
Tim, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Horace? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Second item is the appro, to approve the minutes for our reconvening meeting on June the 12th. Do we have a motion to approve these minutes?
I like that voting.
Carl, thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Tim? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have the, to the approval of all of our expenditures for payment. We have a motion for this, pay our bills.
Ma'am Chair, make the motion to be approved, expenditures for this.
Thank you. Steve, we have a second?
Second.
Tim? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next on our agenda is our citizens' comment period, and the first lady I have is Michelle Vance, New York City, Stephanie Hogan, state your name and address for the record, please.
Michelle Vance, 99 Willow Springs Drive. Today's lesson is on having consideration for others. Consideration is defined as kindness and thoughtful regard for others, treating others as you would have them treat you. First, please know that our time is just as valuable as yours. Having us wait for almost an hour without even any acknowledgement to let us know you are late not only frustrates us, but leaves us to believe there is something going on you do not wish us to hear. I understand that people came unexpectedly, but we are no less important than they are, even if they are elected officials. Second, do not assume that our lack of understanding, a discussion you are having in a board of supervisors meeting was our ignorance or lack of education. Perhaps it was your lack of effective and thorough communication. Third, we are not you people, we are the people. The people who put you in the very seats you are sitting in. Remember, we, the people, your constituents, pay your salary and demand the same respect you yourself expect. Some may have not been involved in the past 26 years, but we are here now. We want to work with you and make this county a great place to live and work. We want each and every one of you to lead, not follow. Fight for what people in your districts believe. You were elected to be the voice of every single person within your district. It is your obligation to bring our voices with you to every meeting and to help us understand, not condescendingly, but with compassion and understanding, that what you say may not be perceived the way you believe you are committed. I did not grow up here in Russell County, but this is now the place I call home, the place where my grandchildren will grow up, the place where my family has chosen to start a business. Therefore, please know, I will make sure my voice is heard. In closing, I would like to just say again that respectful communication goes a long way in making sure everyone understands and feels involved in what is going on with the county. It is my belief that we all have the same interests and want to accomplish the same goals to better our community.
All right, our next person on the agenda is Sean Vance, who will state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name's Sean Vance, I live in 99 Willow Springs, District 1, Tim Lovelace is District 11. I have concerns about the monument up here in town. I've made a few phone calls on my own. I've talked to Tony Doty and so forth and so on, and still have not gotten the answer exactly who owns the statue, so if somebody here might be on that, I appreciate it. The only thing I have really heard, since I do not live in town limits, that I don't have much to say about it, I don't believe. I mean, that's the way I took it. So if I was incorrect on that, I'd like to be informed on that also. So if somebody sitting up here now could tell me, do any of you know who actually owns the monument and responsible for the monument? I'm sorry, is it my turn?
I was told it's town.
Okay, since I do not live-
The deed had been reserved. They got popular, they did.
Okay, well, since I live in the county, but I do not reside in the town, what say do I have about that? If any? Anyone?
I'd say you've got, this is not a question to answer.
I understand that's a comment.
I'm going to answer you, I think you've got the right, that you can say that you want to make that.
Well, I mean-
You may not have a right to vote for a representative or anything of that nature. That would be just a town resident. But I think you can, that's one of our constitutional rights, speak your piece.
Well, I also had gotten a couple of your old budgets that you put out, and I'd say back to my understanding of it, that I would imagine that some of the money in the county triples down into the town. So if there's somehow or another my money that I pay taxes triples into the town, and they're using it for the town, then I should have a say. So I've played the board in its own way to tell the town that it needs to be open to the county, because the monument belongs to the county, to the people, not just the town. I don't know if I'm putting this in terms that are correct or not, but that's the way I look at it. So if there's any way that anybody here could inform me of my unknowledge, you know, not being the right, you know, way to go about it, but I'm concerned about it. It's not that I'm a fan of the Confederacy, I'm a fan of the ideal. And that's what it comes down to. I don't care what color you are, what race you are, what your sexual orientation you are, has nothing to do with it. Everything's equal in my opinion. You're only put on the bad side when you put yourself on the bad side, and that's the way I believe that people should be dealt with. I appreciate the time, if somebody could take a moment, give me a holler, try to get ahold of me somehow, I'd like to get a little bit more information on that, because I do not like to be in the dark with things. I'm not as well spoken as my wife, and she's reminded of that when I come in here, so I try to maintain my volume. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else goes with the other two names on the sign sheet, and if anyone else wants to speak?
I'll let you.
Thank you, yes, sir. Step back, state your name and address, please, to record.
My name's Larry Hughes, L.A.A.Y.L.A.R.R.Y.H.U.K.T.H.S. I reside at 30th Lane Hollow Drive, Russell County. Just a couple of issues, again, it's said that our county, our state, our nation isn't such disarray. I'm not completely blank on anyone. Just like I said at this point, I might just say we need to learn from the past, all right? We need to live today, we need to fight for the express, we learn from the past, and forgive for the future, my man. We've got a nation changing, we've got to unite this nation, this country, this state. We've got some problems. And I don't have the answer, I have a lot of questions that I don't have the answer of, I'm trying to find answers, and I'm concerned. Again, I know that, as Vance mentioned back, that something about your rights, what you should be doing, if you read Virginia Constitution, I think it's all right to learn, or you do, that you are our elected trustees. You're a magistrate, you're a member to the citizens at all times. If you haven't read that, you might want to go read Virginia Constitution. That means you do work for the citizens, you do work for people. Now, we have the choice to elect you or not elect you. So they're choice, you fill the obligation, what the citizens need, or we will make different choices. That's not threat, it's just a state, by example. My biggest concern now is, again, each time, first issues, and last time, we're worried about the pandemic, this seems to, it's still here. How much of it's real? How much of it is made up? I don't know. I do, I do, I do try to social distance, I try to use good hygiene, I typically don't wear masks if I'm someplace where there's definitely, there's a chance I went to hospital day, I feel like I'm going to be exposed to something, that's where I'll be exposed to it, and I'll wear a mask if I'm, no, I don't want to go. Now, I'm of the age, I'm of age, and also I have mental conditions that probably puts me at a great risk. But when I have nurses that I know personally, that don't see them, I haven't seen them, I work, just hope that they can see none themselves, maybe one or two, and on and on, one day, with the listeners in the community, they'll be aware. If that was a gentleman coming in, a great age, by the age, almost 90 years old age, they say when he's in the hospital, he's sick, they're probably wondering about getting my belt, and checking sure he has the wrong virus, he's been sick. So, well, that's another direct result of it, I don't know. I wish I knew the truth, what was happening. It's very, very concerning, because if there is a true pandemic, we need some protection. And we need it, but again, when we don't see it, and I know this is giving you taxes, like, if I'm seeing a paper molder right now, it's in intensive care, so that says, well, maybe there is a problem. But I do have a problem with that. My concern now is not that issue that we spoke on a couple of weeks ago, but I am concerned with the monument. I do think we have a critical break. On Saturday, we were expecting some plans to happen, thank God it didn't, I praise God. I was in Tazlin a couple of weeks ago, the same thing, I think it was from Miss Ford, they were supposed to have a march, and then the citizens up there, for some reason, all of a sudden, never showed up. I was in Marion Thursday, they were there. Thursday, probably 125, crack feet strong, well armed, well armed. In my understanding, they said they would come with a tent to take the statue, they don't, in front of the courthouse, that's rumors, but I cannot say to screw them, they never told me that. But the citizens of the there, it depends though. I think there was a good place for it, somewhere about 200. They did an extra job keeping the two roofs apart. It was a barricade ready to explode. And I'm worried about this nation, I'm worried about, we're at the point where, oh, we're at the tipping point. If we're not worried about it, we should be. It is, now, I think we really need to be concerned with this. I'm worried, I've got grandkids that I'm worried about. I'm an old man, I might not last too long in the paintwork, that's okay. I've got grandkids who we care for. So we've got to take consideration, think about our future generation coming together. Now, are they going to come forward to take the monument down? I don't know. I hope not. Is the county going to vote on it? I hope not. Is the town going to vote? I hope not. Again, Will Osborn has done successful research, I think Will's going to speak to the town, speaking at the 13th. He could tell you a lot, he could tell you, again, those citizens have paid 15 cents, five dollars, citizens across the county, basically, the retired people, or the wives, widows, all the soldiers that died during this revolution, they, or the civil war of the revolution, they died, you know, if anything, they built this, they paid this money, the citizens of the county paid for it. Or as I'm concerned, that belongs to the county. And if the county is paying anything to the town, you have to say so. If you've given them any kind of money for telling tax money, you have to say so. Now, I'm not sure how legal is that, though, I'll refer that to the town, the county attorney, we will find out, I promise you that. Now, again, my concern is, I don't, nothing else, that monument is not a history, historical heritage is all it is. People talk about being white privilege. I like to see the white privilege. I like to see, I've never seen it in my life. I grew up poor, my dad was a sheriff, farmer, on the farms for years, you tell me what that is. The only thing he can do different than the slave community, was he had the choice to move from farmer to farmer, to try to make it another through another year. I'm the only one in my family that graduated from high school, because my brother, my sister, dad had to keep them out, had to have a big family to keep them out of the working farm, so they could eat through the year. And you tell me white privilege, that is a bunch of BS. Bunch of BS. I was little, I was six years old, five, six years old, but dad went off the farm, he worked as a Joe Labor contractor here in Towne, Lebanon. Matter of fact, he was working the streets, I helped him when I was about 10, 20 years old, sweeping the streets of Lebanon as a sweep, street sweeper. And then one day, he was hit by a car one morning, he was disabled when I was 13 years old, he was disabled at that point. I know white privilege kids, you know I was not white privilege. When these people talk about that, I guess I'm American, steady, enough, enough of this crap. I'm a good, I'm American, I'm a color man, I've got colored my skin, I'm not a white man, I've never seen a white man with white mother, look at your skin, are you white? I'm a colored person. I have black blood, Indian maybe, I'm not sure, I know I've got Indian blood, I've got white blood, Irish blood, I'm proud of all of it. No, I just want, all lives matter, when they say black lives matter, your top, top, no, 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 it's white lives don't matter, black lives. I'm sorry. All lives matter. All lives matter. And I'll tell you this, I was Marion, and that's what I told the interview, I said, oh, I'm here to protect your rights, protest for everybody. You protest peacefully, you handle this legally, I will back you whatever you say. When you, when you come up here, you threaten to do these things, and none of the black lives matter, no, I would not handle that. That's racism. They tell me I'm racist, that's racism. Enough is enough. Now, I would expect, and I know there is some concern, if you put some type of racism out there, it may draw attention to us. Attention that already been drawn. I was called for two factors. One from federal, one from a police department. It was expected to be here Saturday, it was expected to be in Tazlin, the week before. They showed up in Marion, they showed up in Elizabethan, that's not our concern tonight. They will be here. If they take one town, they will be here. Now, the question is, when I say they, there's probably more white privilege kids in it than there's black people. I know I had a white privilege kid attack me this morning about giving false information, I said, you don't bet on them. I'll bet it is. To the point that different people, this is pretty straightforward. So I'm worried about this county, about this state, about not just the statue. When the crowd gets here and they get going, where do they stop at? You see it on TV, they don't stop. They get bloodthirsty. They get hungry for power, and they don't know when to stop. You cannot let it get to this point. I thank you for that, appreciate it.
Does anyone else have a lot to speak? All right, seeing that, the close air citizens' comment time. Next is our official officers' reports and requests. And seeing that there, we will now turn over to our county attorney, her reports and requests, it's four items, please.
Thank you, ma'am chair. The first two documents that the board has before them are two resolutions from VRA, and what, the first, the first resolution that you have in front of you is a resolution that the board will agree to execute a moral obligation at closing, and what this, this specific resolution pertains to are all the bonds, all the water bonds that have been associated with the merger of the Castlewood Water and Sewage Authority and the Russell County Public Service Authority. What is contemplated is that there will be, several bonds will be combined into three. The board actually already has done moral obligations for all of these individual loans, so this is really not, this is really not anything new, but this is just executing new moral obligations for the, for the three combined loans.
So you need us to make a motion to approve this?
Yes, to make a motion to, to allow the chairperson to sign, authorize the chairperson to sign.
All right. Do we have a motion for this?
Ma'am Chair, I'd like to make a motion to be approved this resolution to support and authorize the chair, it's not a matter of documents necessary to facilitate the closure of this, this agreement.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
David? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, David.
And the second resolution is very similar, except it applies to the, a new project that PSA is undertaking in regards to Lake Hollow and its new water, water loan, and I believe that amount states that it's $418,000. This, this project is kind of tied into the merger as far as getting some of the good, the advantageous rates that the PSA has been able to get in, in combining the two authorities. This, this just, this just takes it, this board will agree to execute a moral obligation for this loan and this amount at, at closing.
I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you. Carl?
Say.
Second, Steve. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Second resolution. All right. Third is policy manual.
Yes, the personnel policy manual. There was a couple of questions that I had from the, from the board on, on a couple of matters that I presented, and also, there's another addition that I would like to make. Obviously, I'll just sort of state generally, the personnel policy, this is a very comprehensive document, and you want to try to make it that way to cover, you know, all types of situations that involve issues with employees and how, and how things are governed, and so, obviously, it can never handle or cover everything that could possibly happen, but because of, because of some concerns, there's, there's an addition that I would like to make, but hopefully the board will be able to approve that in August if there's no more significant changes.
We just need to tag it until August?
Yes.
All right.
And then, the last thing that I have for you, this is, this is something new that the board did not get to review prior to the meeting. Last year, this board did a moral obligation for a loan for a company that was coming in, Polycap. There have been, there's been an agreement made between Virginia Capital, Capital, Capital and Polycap and the Industrial Development Authority regarding a change in the agreement. The basic term is, that's been changed, is that the company, in the definition of lease, was defined as Polycap, and for the purposes of this specific loan, or with the equipment lease, that will be changed from Polycap to Greenfield ICI Holdings, which is another company that the Polycap company owns. It does not change the terms of the moral obligation that we passed, it's because we have that moral obligation, they had to request our approval for this change as well. Again, my office is attorney for, for the Board of Supervisors and the Industrial Development Authority, and Mr. Tatum has reviewed this document, and my, I don't know if everyone has approved that, but I know it's already been approved by at least another entity, and maybe, maybe all of them, and so I would be requesting your approval of this tonight.
Okay, so do you have a motion for that?
Yes, and to authorize the, the chairperson to sign.
Do we have a motion for that?
Make a motion to be authorized to approve this amendment, the name change.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Lou? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Next on the agenda is the county administrator's reports and requests.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am chair. On the county administrator reports and requests of 2020, first on the county administrator reports is the, is an application of the VDOT Smartscale Route 19 project. This is a-
Excuse me, Glanza.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Christian says he can't hear. Can you help out or get closer to my thing?
We could do that, help that.
Let me just take a second. First, is everybody here or is that one? It woke everyone up, sorry about that. First on the county administrator reports and requests is, is the VDOT Smartscale application for the primary route. This is an application that has already made it through the first phase of the VDOT Smartscale project for US 19. This is down at the Elk Garden School, as you come into the trailer park going on Route 19. As you come over the hill, this is that super elevation that's there, that everybody, it's super the wrong way, we have a lot of accidents on the vehicle trucks through there, you will see a lot of accidents coming through there as we, as you go over the hill and come down to the Elk Garden School. They're going to cut that down some. This is, already made it through the first one. It is a $2,673,000 project that is already made it through Prisler District Smartscale on the first phase one. The second one on the county administrator reports and requests, of course, is the VDOT Smartscale Route 58, another primary. This one is going in down off the mountain to where St. Paul is. This one is at the turn lane improvements coming out of Sundown Drive, and it is a, an approach that, a cross lane and a turn-in lane, that they have problems with coming down the mountain, getting off in time without the cars into the curve, so this will give a great opportunity to fix that safety concern, too. Next, and then on that project, that is a $1,210,000 proposed project.
On that first one?
On that first one, Juanzo, will you get the turn lanes and situation solved where you, when you get over in the turn lane in front of Elk Garden, you're sitting on your side like about to slide into the yard, Elk Garden. Will it raise that up as well? Is that part of this?
The Elk Garden project right now, it terminates from and to is beginning at the trailer park all the way to the end of the school route where you go on to Route 80. That's, that, yes, yes, it will.
They're, they're going to cut it down, right?
They're cutting it down, yes, sir. Yeah, that, if anyone's wrote it, they know it, it's super's the wrong way. It, it actually leads you into the wrong direction. So to get that down and it goes like this and it goes around and then in weather, there's a lot of high rolling, so they're going to correct that and widen out the, the medium. And again, back on the 58 project, smarts, the smartscales projects apply to all the primary routes. And again, this is the 58 project that's coming down into Sundown Drive, which is in Ms. Wallace's district. They, they have a lot of accidents coming across the turn lane, trying to get off at the same time and they're all coming in either in one way across 58 or they're coming down off the mountain to 58 at a high speed. So this give more of a off ramp and a bigger turn lane for side distance. Next on the county administrator reports is the CDBG grant. This is a planning grant. Again, this is an update to the Cleveland Sewer Treatment Plan upgrade. This, right now, the current status is a selection for the engineer, for the preliminary engineering report that is currently underway and it will be a, there will be a meeting with the Board Supervisors Committee, the Department of Housing Development Services and the Engineering Group. Next on the county administrator reports is the Holacre and Castlewood canneries, as again. With the COVID issues, with our, we have upgraded, we have put in new air compressors into the canneries. We're also working with the Tobacco Commission, we have grants on that, improving the upgrades on it. The, the cranes got a little bit slowed down during the COVID issue and we're hoping to pick up back up speed and get that equipment in and get, get a better service to the Russell County residents. That is at both the Holacre and the Castlewood, it will be open up July 14th for operations. So anybody wanting to use it, they're, they're in great shape. These are seven of the ones in the state of Virginia. So with, I see a lot of gardens that have been grown, that have never been grown before, so this will be a great service to our citizens. Next on the county administrator reports is a request by Ms. Wallace to look at our current GIS system. I have been in contact with Interactive GIS, which has our current GIS system under contract. They were already into the upgrade stage to be a more of a Windows-based platform for our GIS system to be able to utilize. We got a draft interaction this week or last week and we're going through and looking at the best systems to give, be able to give better services to the citizens. Next on the county administrator request is the, a request by the treasurer for authorization for the merchant credit card account. This is a motion that I need by the Board Supervisors for, to be able to open this account to the merchant credit card account. I need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have second? Second, Lou. Always a favor? Anyone opposed?
Next on the county administrator reports, our request is the, is a, from the Department of Criminal Justice. This is a, a grant for a total of $70,000. This is a federal grant for our victim witness program. I need an approval for appropriations of the victim witness program in an amount of $70,000.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
Thank you. Do you have second?
Second.
Paul? Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of being here. All right, all those a favor?
Uh.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Second.
Next on the county administrator request is the Carers Oversight Committee members. This is a request by the federal auditors under the Single Audit Act for the chair to appoint to, to the Carers Committee Oversight for the, for the funding that the county received for the pandemic, to be able to look at it. It's an, it is an additional oversight that is required by the Single Audit Act. So it is at the pleasure of the chair.
All right, I will appoint Tim and myself to this committee and we already do have set standard Excel spreadsheets that we have to, it is nothing that, more than reimbursement of what we are using with the county, what we have gotten from PPE equipment, Lexi glass, mask, gloves, things like that. There are set Excel spreadsheets that we have to look at and sign off on and it is part of a audit. So Tim, if you don't care, you will be, we're on that.
I've got a question, it's okay, Madam Chair. I got a call from New Garden Rescue Squad. They, they went into a lot of expense, they bought respirators and I'm just not going to speak for New Garden, but y'all have volunteer squads in their areas. That, that I think that needs to be in, under consideration for reimbursement. Also, they had informed me that they have came out now with a special type of rescue type equipment that will sanitize the inside of the squads. And I don't know about fire departments, but I think all that needs to be looked at.
Ma'am Chair. Also, when you did those scrawdowns on the home and property.
Yes, sir.
How your, what your community looks at.
No problem. We did those, but it, and I think, I think District Representative Eaton, that he brought that up, that has been some of the things that's come across my desk too. And these are important things that we had sure that our rescue squads and our fire departments have, have all the best that they can have during this time. And I think everyone's a little skittish of everything, so I appreciate you mentioning that, thank you. We'll, we'll see that, and also you see that you reach out to all of them, that they get the equipment that they need and that we, that this, because I know he's already been working with the TAM of Lebanon, Holacre, St. Paul, Cleveland with their each portion. There is a formula based on the number of people that are served in their TAM and they've already met, in fact, here to see that they do get reimbursed. And yet, please do reach out to all these folks. We need to see they have everything they need.
If I may add on to that, we, we have, as far as the, the first responders are fire, our search department and the, the analyst services, first responders, we have, we have been giving, you know, supplies PPE through FEMA. One of the advantages of the Carers Act, it does give them an advantage to be able to get more than just what they're using. And again, I want, when the first pandemic came down, everyone knows that masks and anything that was PPE related was very difficult, very expensive to get. So we had, we had a difficulty in order and so, and that was nationwide. But right now, the, the fire and rescue and first responders have their, but this gives them an opportunity to be able to get what they need, you know, if this continues to be able to stay. So the, some of the squads have already reached out to my office and Board Supervisors. So this will be something that Ms. I and Mr. Lovelace will be taking a look at, yes.
You know, Cat, Juanzo, it'd be nice if we had something like a white page of an instruction sheet or an explanation to educate these people. It's the unknown.
But I believe they already have one. Did you get that?
I know I talked to CH Wallace and he said he had, he had that power, Mr. Wallace.
We, we briefed, we briefed his assistant, me and Alicia Dea, last week, last Thursday.
Let, let's explain how this money now. The money, there was a list made out by the state and it was based on population.
That is correct.
Okay, so everybody knew what was coming down. But within that money, the towns, each of the towns had allocation based on their population. So theirs will be drawn down from their allocated funds and the county will be drawn down from their allocated funds. We have until December, but end of December to utilize this money. If we don't use it for these legitimate causes, it goes back to the state.
That is correct.
And it is for reimbursement. This is, this is what they've shared us, they've used and spent. And they do have an exact Excel spreadsheet that each family goes in and how much it is and it automatically calculates it for us.
Again, the, just to emphasize that the board members, this, this funding is only dedicated to the COVID incident. This is, and.
I've got another question, this maybe, it may not be related to this. Are there COVID funds available to community organizations? Is there another pool of money, is this just for the county?
It is for, it does reach out to other organizations, but what, again, our guidelines is under the Single Audit Act and the state and the federal guidelines is, it has got to be COVID-related.
There are a lot done COVID-related.
Yes. There are, for example, and I'll throw this.
The reason I'm asking is that, excuse me, I saw an application form somewhere. Okay, I want to call where, I've got a copy of here somewhere, but it was an application like on one page that you could apply for COVID. And I just wanted to know, is that the county's, the same money is different in county or is it a different pool?
Well, each, each county has an opportunity to look at these nonprofits that is COVID-related donations. Also, the towns that have the entities and businesses and their organizations within them, they're to use that money in the same capacity. What money we give them is to cover that population within the town of Lebanon, town of Holacre, town of Cleveland and the town of St. Paul. So they get to use that within their boundaries for the same type of guidelines. It has to be COVID-related, either PPE organizations that is tied to services that if, that is COVID-related.
Question was, it's not separate pool then?
No.
It's the same.
It's the same pool of money, yes, sir. Next, on the county administrator request, it in reports is the Community Service Board resignation, Mr. Donnie Ramey. He sent a letter to the Board Supervisors and he thanked them for the opportunity to serve on the Community Service Board, but due to the, his work schedule change and other commitments, he is, will no longer be able to provide, you know, the time and service that he feels that he needs to do. And he really appreciates the opportunity to have to do so, but gratefully, regretfully, he is resigning. So I, I need a motion for acceptance of the resignation.
All right. Let's have, have a motion to accept his resignation.
So move.
Steve, a second?
Second.
Lou, are always a favorite sending his resignation?
Uh.
We do have someone that we have that has put in her application, so if the board wishes to do so, we're, I'm ready to.
My name is Jill Vance.
All right.
I'll say.
Okay.
Make a motion that.
I need a few secrets coming to work tonight.
And she'll be nominated by confirmation.
Say.
Tim, Steve, all right, always a favor?
Uh.
Too close. Okay, so.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, champion, in appointment, your work's gonna start. All right, Juanzo, next?
Next on the county administrator request and reports is the Russell County Planning Commission flat. This is for the Robert Dixon and Donna Dixon family line adjustment. I need a motion for approval for the Russell County Planning Commission family line adjustment.
Do we have a motion for that?
So move.
David, District, right, second?
Second.
Tim, all right, always a favor?
Uh.
Abstention.
Okay, Lou, thank you. We'll stay.
Madam Chair, that concludes the many county administrator reports and request.
Okay. Next, we have any matters that are presented by the board members, they want to discuss anything, Tim?
Uh, not tonight.
Lou?
Yes. In the past couple of years, we've had the building official report, give a report on some of the properties within the county that do not comply with the ordinances. And I have had a couple of more complaints, particularly on some of those that we've already got on the books. And I don't want to embarrass anybody tonight, but I'd be happy to let you all know who I've had calls from. And they're already, he's already looked at them several times and they had worked their way up the 30-day cycle and all that and they're hanging there. So they, they do fit the ordinance, but we just have not done anything else. I think we've stalled out somewhere along the way. So I've had that request to take care of that, so I'll do that tonight. We can do that and I'll, I'll give you all the information after, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Wallace.
Paul? David?
Yes, ma'am, I just have a couple of things. I just wanted to speak briefly on Mountain Movers and something that we're working on through Mountain Movers is a Habitat for Humanities project, something I'd like for the board to consider, just to plan to see, let you guys be thinking about this, is some of the properties that we auction off through the, and I, and this is probably a question also for the attorney, to look into this and do some research to see if we have an opportunity to do a Habitat for Humanity project within this area of Russell County. To be able to, we've met with Dr. Wright and his wife, she actually headed up a project in Tennessee and in our Reverend Woody Scott's wife headed up and was on the board of the Winnenwise County. And those two, we've kind of put it on their shoulders to be able to look into this a little deeper. They have made a lot of communication with Habitat for Humanity in Tennessee. They're actually coming up to meet with us at a Mountain Movers meeting to help us to get organized, to be able to provide housing for people that need a home. And we know that there's a great need, we all talk about it on this board, the need that's there. And I just wanted to brief the board of what we've been discussing through Mountain Movers. And also, I would like to commend all the areas that had their 4th of July fireworks. I went off really well and my prayer is that nobody gets COVID-19 and everybody's safe. I thought we had great social distancing and everything, so I just wanted to kind of brief the board on this too.
Steve?
Yes, ma'am. I'll, I'll put my plug in for Mountain Movers, Habitat for Humanity. I've seen this work in some other areas and there's all sorts of different housing issues. Could be recovery-related housing, could be housing for elderly, could be housing for low-income folks, but it is a great, it's a great system. Frankly, doesn't require a whole lot of money. You get enough money to do that first house, first house, the people, you just don't give them, they buy it. They have greatly reduced costs and they put sweat equity into it. And with the money, the first house and sale house, first house, generate second, third, and fourth. And, and there may be a possibility, Dr. Wright, I've ended up, maybe even resorted. So they have, it's kind of like Goodwill, so they recently merchandised this. I think it would be a good thing. But I wanted to address some Larry's questions, I guess. And Larry, when you, when you, I know you get a lot of, you're preaching to the choir here, but a lot of us feel the same way about him. There is an existing statute in place, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give it to you. It's right out of the Virginia Code 18.2137, it talks about injuring, injuring any property, monument, et cetera. It talks about the, the penalties for it, up to $1,000 damage, it's class three misdemeanor. If it goes over 1,000, it's felony. And there's a code section that it references that describes what's in there and includes all the requirements. all war monuments. And I think this, at some point in time, we, I would, I would be amenable to look at some sort of ordinance. In fact, I'd like to put a little more teeth into it, and maybe go, we can be more stringent, we can't be less stringent than what the state is, but we can be more stringent. I think you're right that eventually they'll get around to us. I don't know when it'll be, but eventually it will. And, uh, we need to be working on this right now. It'll require public hearing. A resolution then means squad, but an ordinance has teeth. I'd like to go up to about $2,500 and/or community service. I would rather see him out there cleaning it up, fixing it, to the toothbrush, screw thing on it, than everyone. That's, that's, that's my...
And/or.
And/or. Maybe and, and/or, you know? That's, that's all my questions.
Mr. Christian, a second?
Uh, I would like to ask you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Vance and Mr. Hughes, uh, when I pushed up word, okay, maybe try to do something to the monument, I called Tony Doherty and spoke to him, and he said he felt sure that the, uh, councilman would not vote, remove that. I talked to another councilman, and he said, that he, that died, Tony, not even bringing it up, definitely would take action one way or another, that would be a better step to take, but not to take down. I had been a member of the Southern Confederate for about 27 years, and I'm strongly in support of it. We cleaned the graveyard up, back off from lobby script, and these cleaned up again. Uh, so I am very much in support of Confederate monument, or any other monuments, historical monuments. There's no time to take them down, if they're, it's a time to leave them standing. That's my...
All right, the only thing that I have to say is I would like, I would like to thank, um, Mr. Brian Ferguson and the PSA workers, that they have installed the new trash site at Cleveland Elementary, and I understand it's quite nice, and it will be manning, and it's right there at the school. There's paid roads, titty to it. So I would like to thank all those folks that have been working on that. All right, we also have been invited by the IDA to go to Union West Virginia to look at a project that they are, um, going to look at. And it is my understanding there will be three of us board members that will be traveling to see that. So with that being said, we will have to, uh, have a reconvening meeting on Wednesday, July the 8th, at 8 o'clock, meeting here, because three of us will be traveling together. So at this time, I will take a motion to reconvene for Wednesday at 8, um, to go to visit that site. Steve, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Of course. All right. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay. We're finished, Lou. Thank you much.